All right, welcome to the meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Monday, December 1st. The first item is to confirm our future meeting dates. We tentatively had a meeting scheduled for December 8th, but I understand we have to change that date. So, what about the 10th or the 11th?
It suits us.
Which is a Wednesday or a Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, didn't you send a Monday out? Is it, can't do that one?
You scheduled that at your last meeting, Monday, December 8th, because Tuesday, December 9th is the Conservation Commission meeting.
Oh, okay, okay.
But now there's a conflict for Monday, December 8th.
So what?
For the 10th or the 11th?
The 11th, or we could go into the following week.
I could do the 11th. The 10th is the Curry College Neighborhood Meeting.
I know.
I'd like to attend that.
Yeah.
Okay, the 11th?
The 11th is a Thursday?
Or we could do Monday, the 15th if that.
15th is good too.
How about for you, the one of those nights? Should we try for the 11th? We have a lot of-
Yeah, I've got nothing on the 11th, I guess. I could do the 11th.
Okay, so let's pencil in the 11th. We do have a number of things. We've got town meeting articles that are, because the deadline is January 1st. So, the question, I guess, is should we schedule a meeting for the following week?
Probably, yeah.
And if so, I'm pretty open the following week night. The 16th, I think, is the, there's a Board of Appeals hearing that night that we may want to be at, which is Tuesday. But maybe, well, if we're meeting on the 11th, maybe we want to look at Wednesday, the 17th, or Thursday, the 18th? How do those dates look?
The 18th is fine with me.
18th?
The Thursday?
Now we'd be back to Thursday for December.
Yeah.
So, the 11th and the 18th.
Can't do the Tuesday, or no?
Well, it's the next Board of Appeals hearing on the 131 Elliott Street 40B.
Okay. Yeah, the 18th is fine, I guess.
All right, let's, let's at least confirm the 11th and we'll try for the 18th. That's good for you, Dennis.
The 11th and the 18th?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. All right, the next item is approval of payroll and vendor warrants.
Move approval of current payroll and vendor warrants.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Citizen speak. Do we have anyone here tonight for citizen speak? I'm seeing none. We will go on. The next item was a meeting with the Board of Assessors regarding the tax rate setting, but I believe their meeting is still going on, so we'll move on to the next item, which is the FY15 Fire Department Education Incentive.
Make a motion to approve the amount of $92,254 for the FY15 Fire Department Education Incentive, which reflects a total of 1,912 credits at $48.25 per credit.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, while we're waiting for the Board of Assessors, why don't we move on to budgets? And we can start with the first budget, is the Fire Department budget. And Chief Jack Brandt is here, so Chief, if you'd like to come up and discuss your budget with us.
Hi, Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good to be here. Good, how you doing?
Very good.
Well, thanks for being here tonight, Chief. We wanted to get all the budgets on tonight so that we could get as many of them as possible downstairs to the Warrant Committee for their, to start off their budget season for them. So, we have your request, we have, as you know, a level dollar request, we have a level service budget, and we have, again, this is a Warrant Committee request, a 2% deduction budget. So, each department submitting three different numbers to us.
Right.
And maybe you could, do you want to give us an introduction to your budget, or bring anything to our attention to start with?
Yeah, where do you, where would you like to start on that?
Should we start with level service?
Top, top to the bottom.
Yeah, level service, I think.
And then we'll go on to level dollar?
In level service, we did put in one new lieutenant's position this year, which would be our training officer position. In addition to that, we looking to have it completely representative of what our needs are. We upped the overtime account to $400,000 from $300,000 where it currently sits. And we had an addition of $10,000 to the training account. And that, that really, you know, there was modest adjustments in general expenses which came to around $5,000. And that pretty much sums it up, and the total of level service moving forward would be $5,086,371.
Under level service, Jack, why increase the overtime?
Basically, as it was explained to us, that you did want it to be representative of what our costs truly are. And year to year, we're spending in that, in that range. So, in effect, we've been undefended in that.
All right. So, you're taking it from other line items?
It's been taken from other line items, yes.
Okay. Okay. Didn't I just see a spreadsheet on overtime, fire overtime?
Uh, yes.
And it has been going down, right?
Yes.
It, I'd say it goes up and down. And really, it all depends on what's going on across the street. You know, there's years we have, that we do very well injury and sickwise, and there's years we don't.
Yep, yep.
And, you know, it seems to stay within a certain swing, but, you know, it does fluctuate a bit.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And in terms of new equipment, Jack, in the level service versus the level dollar budget?
Mm-hmm. In level service, we've put a budget that's just under $60,000, and that's itemized. And if we were to stay at level dollar, we'd present down to $30,000, and we'd simply prioritize off of that list.
Maybe you could just speak to what the new lieutenant's position in the level service budget would entail?
Mm-hmm. When I, that goes back to, actually, when I first came into the chief's position, I saw the need, probably within the first year, that our training budget was going out just randomly. If there was a class going on that suited, you know, you'd pick some people and send them out, they'd take the class. What I was finding at that point in time was that we weren't getting any value out of it. You know, certain individuals would go out, get the training, but there was really no mechanism for them to come back and retrain. So, that money was, you know, training a very small portion of the job. So, what we did in the meantime, with this being kind of the final goal, in the meantime, we took a lieutenant's position, set forth a description of what we wanted from them, gave it a stipend, and that position still works on a group as an emergency responder. So, it's limited, he's got limited access to come in day to day and oversee the training. So, what tends to happen is there's no uniformity, there's no oversight of that. So, this is the next logical progression to that, in which what we'd be doing would be creating a staff lieutenant's position where he worked a day shift and is actually physically here to run every training exercise, oversee it, and make sure the quality is there, and make sure the uniformity is there. We're far better than we were. This will be the complete package.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for the chief on the budget?
Can you, Jack, can you comment on the, the training that Fallon Ambulance provides?
Yeah, Fallon comes over and does continuing service so that the membership maintain their REMT status. Matter of fact, he's over there tonight. They come in, I believe, once a month. At certain times of the year, they'll come in, they'll come in a little bit more for you, when hours are winding down and, you know, they, people need to get the training under their belt. But, yeah, generally, once a month throughout the year, they come in and do some training.
I know Fallon pays for that, but do you know how much, do you know how much it is? How much is saving the taxpayer?
I wouldn't have a cost for that, to be honest with you. That'd be something they'd have to answer.
Okay.
Anything else for the chief?
I'm good.
Okay, I don't have anything either, so, Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
We have a motion on the chief's budget.
Yeah.
Number seven.
Yeah. Move to approve and forward to the Warrant Committee, the FY16 Fire Department budget, the amount of $5,086, $5,086,371 level service, $4,825,346 level dollar.
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Chief.
Have a good night.
Good night. All right, the Board of Assessors has joined us, so we will move back to item five on our agenda, which is a public hearing with the Board of Assessors and our new chief appraiser. If you'd all like, whoever would like to come up and join us at the table. All of you, we can just pull up a couple of cheers if you all want to come and join us.
Jim Henderson.
I think the public probably knows most of you, except for Mr. Bushway, but why don't we let you introduce yourselves? Jim, if you want to start?
My name is Jim Henderson. I'm chairman of the Board of Assessors.
Bill Bennett, member of the Board of Assessors.
Brian Kernan, member of the Board of Assessors.
I'm Bob Bushway, chief appraiser.
Welcome to the meeting tonight. Thank you for joining us, and welcome aboard. Bob, who's our, Town of Milton's new chief appraiser, who took over for Jeff Dambly, who retired after a lot of years of service. So, we're here to talk about the classification of the taxes tonight, and to set the tax rate. And we have some information from you. Would you like to start us off, Jim?
Sure. The, the questions that we have, the first one, I think it would be the classification. And historically-
Actually, one minute, Jim. I just wanted, this is a public hearing, so we're officially convening a public hearing, and I neglected to mention that at the beginning, so. And if we have anyone from the public who would like to address us tonight, who might come in, we will, we will allow them an opportunity to be heard also. Thanks, Jim.
Okay, I can start off, and then can defer to Bob, who put all these numbers together. The main question we have here is the, the rate shift, and historically, it's been kept at 150%, going back to, I think, 2005, was it? Or was it 2006?
Seven years.
Seven years. And if we continue to do that, because of the dramatic increase in the single-family residential valuation, going up about 9.5%, commercial going up roughly 4.6%, it would cause, the result of that would be, at 150%, would be a shift to the residential that would be higher than the commercial. Actually, the average residential would go up about 2.12%, and the commercial would go down about 2.5%. So, we've discussed this as a board, and I think our recommendation is, is that we go to a shift of 157%. And I thought historically that it has been at 150% forever, but going back to the records, we found that in 2008 was 1.69, 2007, 1.83, 2006, 1.9, and 2005, 1.95. So, there has been history for this, and our sense is that it would be more fair if both commercial and residential had a like increase in the burden and the increase in the taxes. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Bob, or?
That sums it up pretty well, I think. You know, typically, it seems like when the residential values go up, almost double what the commercial average is, you want to try to level out that increase on the tax impact. So, your commercial and residential classes on the tax end is going up approximately the same amount, so there's no, that's, having a shift of a couple more percentages over on the commercial side kind of levels out the playing field a little bit on that, so. I think that's a direction that seems to make sense, but Selectmen's decision on this, so, that's, that's what the Board of Assessors feels might be the fairest direction building.
So, you voted just for, I want to just be clear, for a 157% shift? Is that what you said, Jim?
Yes.
Is there a statutory maximum?
Pardon?
Is there a statutory maximum on the amount of shift?
175.
175, okay.
In layman's terms, can you explain what 157%? What does that mean?
It, it just means that the tax rate shift from the, from the residential to the commercial, historically, has been 150%. So, whatever the rate is for the residential, the commercial has been 150% higher.
Okay.
So, with the increased valuations, at 157%, the rate for the residential would be 13.94, which is down from last year's 14.99. And for the commercial would be 22.41, which is, would be down from 22.97 last year.
So-
But then you make it up in the, how do you make it up? How do you make up, when you decrease the percentage, how do you make up the gap? By increasing the assessments?
No, you, you, if we stayed at 150%, the residential rate rather would be 13.98. So, we're talking about four cents dropping in the, in the residential rate, which, well, actually works out to be a pretty significant amount of money. And the commercial rate would be 21.41. So, with this shift from 150 to 157, the commercial rate would go from 21.41 to 22.41.
If you think about it, this, you basically have a tax levy, okay? That tax levy gets spread out amongst all the property owners, commercial, residential, industrial, based upon the value, the relative values of, of those properties. Because the residential, because the market value of the residential properties are increasing quicker than the commercial properties, you wind up taking more of that tax levy and giving it to the residential. And it's not like they're, they're necessarily new residences, it's just that the fair market value of those houses are going up quicker in value. So, it's not like you're spreading it over more people. So, effectively, what happens is the property owner, the residential property owner, really gets more than a 2.5% increase.
Right.
If you look at his last year's tax and this year's tax, if you stay at the 150.
If I may?
Yes.
One of the slides I put together was showing the 10-year history of the average single-family assessment. And you can see, it has been going down when the market has been dipping, but now we've got a spike from last year to this year. So, this, that dramatic spike shifts more of the tax burden over to the residential class. So, by shifting, by changing that shift ever so slightly, that levels out this big spike that you see on the average single-family assessed value.
So, so the average single-family assessed value is higher today than it was at the, at the height of the boom in '06? Is that correct?
Yes.
I don't know if that's good news or bad news.
It's a pretty big increase from 2014. We went from the average family assessed value of 5.16 up to 5.65 this year, so it is a big jump, but-
9.5%.
The values have increased that much over the past year.
Yeah. But it's roughly $15,000 over where, what the valuation was in 2008.
Actually, if anybody saw the newspaper on Sunday, did you see the, the stuff?
In the dark?
It says that Milton is actually in the top 100 most expensive towns in the country.
Well, the assessors gave us some additional information in the package showing that we're, I think it was 38th or 39th? The listing of the top tax bills, I think we were 39th.
Average tax.
Average tax bill.
Mm-hmm.
That was at a rate of $14.99.
Right, so last year's single-family tax rate, $14.99. This year, it will be dropping, you know, over a dollar. You know, if you decide to go along with the 157 shift, the rate drops to 13.94. So, it's a significant drop on the, on the residential.
But the average value of the house increases?
Exactly. As long as the town budget continues to go up, people are going to pay more in property taxes.
Right. So, there's no decrease in payment for the, for the taxpayer?
Exactly.
It's just, the rate goes down, the value goes up?
Exactly.
Yeah.
At 157, the, when you compare this year to last year, the average tax bill in fiscal 14 was $7,740. At 157, it would be $7,879. So, it would be, or, or, $7,080, I would say. So, $141 increase. The commercial would go from $14,892 average tax bill up to $15,588, which would be a $313 increase. But the percentage increase would still be in line, pretty close to 2% increase for both.
Jim, could you, I'm sorry, could you give, once again, the residential increase, the dollar amount of the average increase?
It went from 7,880, I'm sorry, 7,903, I'm rounding, to 7,880.
So, the increase would be 141.27.
That's a decrease.
I think the first number was 11.
He flipped it on us, Jim. It's going up to 7,9.
I'm sorry.
He flipped it on us.
So, 7,880, just going up to 7,903.
I'm sorry, 7,740 to 7,880.
That's the one I kicked out.
And here again, rounding, $141 increase. I apologize for that. I was looking at the wrong number.
Commercial rate what?
Commercial would be going from 15,272 to 15,588.
The average.
Which would be roughly average, average, which would be a $313 increase. We, we did look at median using that, but it would have resulted in a much higher shift, and we just felt that the average would be appropriate to do it at 157 rather than a much higher shift, using median.
Just out of curiosity, do we have any statistics in terms of, on the commercial side, how we compare with other South Shore towns in terms of commercial rates and our average commercial real estate tax bills? In other words, the, the impact on commerce in, in the town, or potentially driving, you know, businesses out of the town?
I think it's tough to judge that, because we only have about 3%.
I know, it's small, I know.
It's commercial and industrial property.
Right. So, all you can really do is look at the average bill.
Right, there aren't that many towns that have such a low number for commercial property, so.
Right. I, I know Braintree uses a 175% split, and they've used that all along.
Okay.
So, I, and I don't know what, what you've seen in splits for the other towns around, if the shift is as high as 1.75.
Yeah, no, they're typically in that range, you know, between 170, 175, so, you know, 157 is fairly conservative.
Okay, all right.
Framingham always maxes out, for example.
Last year, it maxes out too, right? Yeah.
The materials that you gave us had references to policy decisions needing to be made for exemptions, but if I remember the discussion from last year, and I may not have it right, I think you recommended against that previously, and we've, and the town has never done that.
Correct, right, yeah.
It's a-
Whether it's commercial or residential.
Right. Yeah, residential exemption basically is, works fairly well for either a large city with a lot of rental properties, or like on the Cape, where they have a lot of rental properties, and non-owner, uh, non-owner occupied properties. But in a town like Milton, it doesn't typically make sense, doesn't line up too well. On the small commercial exemption, again, with only 3, 3.5% commercial, it's not the kind of community that would probably line up too well with that. The other slight problem with small commercial exemption is that the break doesn't go to the small business, it goes to the real estate owner, and they may own a large block of properties, but the benefit goes to the owner and not, not the small business, so, about 10 out of 351 cities and towns use that exemption. So, I don't think Milton has ever, to my knowledge, ever adopted that. The board's vote tonight would, would be no on both of those, the residential and the small commercial exemption.
So, since this is a public hearing, do we have anyone who would like to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, any other discussion?
I'm fine.
I'm good.
We have a draft motion. I know we're waiting for your recommendation, so we didn't have one prepared. Do we need to specifically include the rates in, in the motion?
Yes, if you go to, if you go to this section here. The decision to be made under classification, and then just, the residential factor will be the 13.94 for residential and 22.41 for commercial, and you are not going to adopt the residential exemption or the small commercial exemption.
Yeah, just to get into motion without stumbling over ourselves.
May I, may I make a suggestion?
Yes, that would be very helpful.
The tax rate could actually, you know, change a penny or two once you do all the calculations, so if you want to vote the residential factor of 97.6867 translates into a shift of 157, so, not to confuse the issue, but typically-
So, what was that number again?
That's the minimum residential factor, which translates into the 157 shift.
Okay.
So, that-
Yes, I agree with that.
Yeah.
Is that consistent with your vote this evening?
Yes.
Okay, because we, so why do we entertain a motion to adopt a minimum resident, residential factor of 97.6867%? And to not adopt a residential exemption or a small, small commercial exemption?
So, move.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Anything else that we should add to that motion, Bob? No, okay. Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It was a public hearing. Thanks for joining us tonight. All right, now we're back to budgets. Why don't we skip over Conservation Commission for the moment? We'll go to Information Technology, because we have Jim Skroy, our IT director, here with us, and let's move on to IT next. Hi, Jim, if you'd like to come up and join us?
How's everyone doing?
Good.
Good evening. So, Jim, we have your budget. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure.
Beginning, maybe, just to talk about the level service versus the level dollar? And any other information you might want to give with us?
Well, as far as, if you, look at the, the cover sheet here, I mean, it worked out well, separating it out by contractual obligations in, in general this year. So, it, it sort of shows where we're going with this, that there's a tremendous amount of contracts that we have in place to keep the system running day to day, as far as protecting the, the infrastructure, the security. And that, that's basically what you're seeing here, the 201,455. And this coming year, we've, we've had a big hit in two areas. The phone system, a lot of the equipment where it was a new, new phone system was under warranty. So, as that equipment starts going out of the manufacturer's warranty, we have to incorporate that in a contract, and that went up significantly. And the other area that we've gone up is in data storage and backup security. We've gone, so we've gone from 2 terabytes of data to 4 terabytes of data that we are allowed to store in our system. And that's a direct result of GIS, people scanning information into the computer. It, basically, it goes somewhere, and that, that data has to be backed up, and then it goes offsite to, as the redundant, as the redundant backup. So, in doing that, we've basically doubled the cost of that. And we've also done a, a little consolidating here, where the library, they were due for repl- where the library, they were due for replacing servers. All of their equipment over there was put in at the time of the new construction. So I think that's like six years now. So Will needed new servers. So what we did is we took, we took his servers and put them into our virtual environment. So it's not costing him anything as far as him going out and having to buy new servers. We incorporated into our virtual environment. So that brings us up now to 15 servers that we have in our virtual environment. And all of those servers need to be maintained and security wise and so forth. So those are two of the big budget busters that we have this year. And of course, salary has gone up. I have the SEP increase for Mr. Mallett and the contractual increases.
Jim, what would happen if you had to take the 0.2% decrease?
What translates basically to is hardware. Replacing workstations, replacing our equipment. And that would basically be what would take the hit, is making equipment last longer, which right now, when we replace equipment, what we're hearing is people are reporting that, you know, the system's running slow. I can't get the data that I want as quick as I want it. And that's basically because the software bumps up, then you have to bump the hardware.
I see.
To offset the different changes and.
So a decrease in your budget would?
Would affect replacement of workstations. And it would translate into, you know, slower as far as the employees retrieving their data, doing their daily work. And the thing that I'm, we're pushing for now is we're looking to replace our workstations with solid state hard drives in the computers. They're a little bit more money, roughly about $100 more, but they have no moving parts. The solid state drive is like electronic, it's like a circuit board. So it's less likely to malfunction. So that's where we're trying to replace them with and we're trying to increase the memory that all these computers have. And, you know, with that, that's where we're headed. We've basically eliminated all the XP machines. Now we're trying to work on the first level of Windows 7s that we put into place three, four years ago. So that's basically, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead.
So that's basically what would be affected, is equipment.
So Jim, your level dollar line is 408,000, which is about $50,000 over what's appropriated this year.
Correct.
So it's, so even though it's level dollar, it's a higher number. It looks as though that's just because that's the contractual amount for the next year that you're obligated to pay.
Right.
Is there anything else or does that account for the full 50?
It, well, if you look on the back sheet there, the 45.79 for salary and wages.
Okay.
Breaks down to 46.05.
Okay.
For the rest of it.
Okay, I thought that was in the level service, but okay. All right, so that's in both because it's in a different line for the FY15 budget. Okay, that makes sense.
I'll move to, I'll move it to approve and forward to the Warren Committee, the FY16 information technology budget in the amount of $422,303, which is level service, and $408,687, which is level dollar.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
I want to side here, I just wanted to let you know that we've had a company, Chambers Advisory Group, that contacted us basically a year or two ago. And what they do is they assess our phone services. And it's no cost to the town. The way they get paid is what they get in savings. They get half of it for a year.
Mm-hmm.
And.
Oh, and get the telephone bills themselves.
Right, yeah, so whatever is appropriated for phone service, we don't go over that. It just stays the same. So what they've come up with is, on the town side, we're basically saving 460 a month. On the police side, $196 a month. So what we're doing is half of that is going to them now and then we're getting the other half in savings. So once that year is up, we'll get the whole 460 on the town side and the 200, or 196 on the police side.
Now, those are savings on our charges for voiceover inter?
No, 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 on the analog.
Analog phone, okay.
On the analog lines.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Yeah, and what it was too is there were a lot of lines out there that we didn't even realize we had.
Okay.
That were on the bills. And what he did is, his company, they go out and they look at that bill. We gave them all of our invoices and then they went through it and they looked for the charges. And a lot of the categories, we were getting charged way above what we should have been. On Centrex lines, there's different ways that the phone company categorizes the lines. And what they do is they then make the changes for us to get us the best savings. And like sometimes when you dial 9 to get out, that's a cheaper service than to just dial direct out.
Fair enough, yeah.
So they went through all of that and they came up with the savings. So I just thought I'd let you know that, you know, every little bit counts.
Exactly.
Jim, we should probably note too that the IT study is out for RFP right now.
Yes.
So it's possible that, depending on where that's at in the spring, whether we've got a bid that's been accepted and where that study might be, that, I guess there could potentially be some changes to this budget at a later date.
Possibly, possibly.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Good night.
I guess I really didn't focus on that before, but that was the Warren Committee's charge to the department heads that contractuals would be funded in the level dollar budget?
Yes. Okay, the next one is consolidated facilities. Our consolidated facilities director is here, Bill Ritchie. Bill, good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, Bill. So we have your budget, your level service and level dollar request. And like the others, would you like to start us off with some kind of an introduction to the budget?
Yeah, well basically I submitted a little narrative of where the department, how we began. You know, basically, I'm in the job now just a little over three years. Basically, and I try to explain, you know, how big the department, as we started to grow, as we started out myself and hired an office assistant and we finally now have like eight staff. Basically oversee 925,000 square feet of space, almost a million square feet of space, 22 buildings. And department's really growing now. Now that people know that we're actually out there, our work order system has just gone crazy. You know, we started out with 100 work orders, over 4,000 with 200 back ordered. So as people know where they are now, the workers are coming in. So it's a good thing, but it's a bad thing. Because sometimes you have the staff to kind of do it.
You said 925,000 square feet?
About 925,000 square feet.
But 650 of that is the schools, right?
A good, about 680,000 square feet is the school department, yes. But, you know, we're actually, so, and, you know, we getting involved, we, you know, we go down to the dog pound once in a while, which is not even on the square footage because it's not, it's a small little shelter. But, you know, we spend a lot of time there. We put, last year we did a new roof. We go, we try to kind of work on the heat. This year we did a small little walkway just to keep them up and running. So, you know, we, you know, we do get involved and, you know, and it's not that you're throwing, you know, good money into bad money, but it's a shelter that has to be maintained. It's, you know, unfortunately you have to keep it safe.
Yes.
And then I kind of listed in my report, you know, all the things, you know, what, you know, how the department grew and how, you know, how we're trying to be proactive and do preventive maintenance. And, you know, some of the effects that if we continue not to have a decent budget, then obviously some of the things will get kind of back ordered. But it's pretty much, you know. And I also listed in the back, you know, we've, you know, the Warren Committee has been very generous over the last year, you know, trying to give us extra money to fund the department's small projects.
Some one-time funding you're talking about, yes.
Yeah, so I listed a bunch of projects. I mean, and there's many more, but I didn't want to overwhelm anyone. I could list 3,000 projects, but I wanted to pick, you know, last year they gave me $85,000. So I tried to pick, you know, another budget number, some things that I wanted to do this year, which total was about $60,000 in one-time money. Because, you know, not really capitalized. Capitalized as a whole, but if you look at all the individual projects, they're under $10,000.
And how are things working with your new painter, with the hours that must be, a help, having someone?
Yeah, well, yeah, we had.
The off-hours.
Yeah, pretty much worked, you know, 75 to 80% of the time he's working off-hours. He's very flexible. Obviously, sometimes if we have to get into a school building or a place during, you know, during the daytime when there's no school, so he's pretty flexible. He'll change his, he'll change his shift around, you know, the kind of comment they need to the school, which is extremely helpful. And exactly, in a couple nights, we had a couple emergencies. He was already in town, so I didn't have to bring somebody in. He was already there, so it's nice to have that type of position off-hours. Working out pretty good.
Bill, are you almost at the end of hiring people for this department?
I, for the time being, yes. And I actually, actually had this conversation with, you know, the town administrator not too long ago. I would love to continue to grow the department. There's a few more key positions I'd like to put into place, but not having a facilities department, there's really no place to put us. We really have a place to park our vehicles. We're working, you know, out of our trucks. We have stuff stored at the school department in different parts of the building, so it's really inefficient. So I would like to grow down the line, but, so I'm kind of waiting to see what's going to happen with the DPW study. I know Joe Lynch is trying to do a study down there because we're looking at consolidated facilities, the park departments, probably all merging into one if possible.
Bill, when the consolidated facilities were started, what was the first budget, can you remember?
I think it was like $144,000.
So, and how many years are we into it?
Just, just a little over three years.
So we've gone from 140 to 900 and something, is it?
Well, yeah, well, actually a little less because we just, we just put a couple transfers. But, yeah, but pretty much it was all staff.
Right. I guess my question is, how much is this budget going to be in three more years? Are we looking at a $2 million budget?
No, I think the last, you know, when we did the five-year projections, the last two staffing positions that we want to put in there, I'd love to see a licensed carpenter, craftsman in the department so we don't have to go outside and have a contractor who can pull permits. Right now, all the permits are pulled by, I pull the permits under my license, but I'm not really doing the work, so I'm just trying to supervise it. I'd like to have somebody in-house that has that capabilities. And I would like to get another general maintenance person that could learn the trades, or the electrician and heating technician for someone down the line so that person can kind of grow with the department. So when these people move on and retire, somebody else has that type of knowledge.
I guess my question I would have, Bill, is if you had to keep the department the way it is now?
Yeah.
What would happen to our buildings in town in 10 years? Could you keep up with the maintenance?
I could keep up with the general maintenance, but I'd make it very clear that we're not a capitalized department. We don't do capitalized projects.
Yeah.
So some of the, you know, obviously, can we maintain the schools? We can do a good job, the schools, the public libraries, the COA, and the police department. But when you're looking at old fire stations, when you're looking at DPW yards, we cannot maintain them. We don't have that, the amount of staff that we need. We don't have backhoes and equipment.
But for regular maintenance, you have the staff?
I have the staff. I think the licensed craftsmen down the line will be enormous help, you know.
Just so not, there's no confusion out in TV land. A lot of the employees in this department came from other departments. Not, I know you've got a couple of new positions and here the painter is new, but, but some of these were, are, when the consolidated facilities was created, it's not as though we added $500,000 that wasn't already in the budget. We shifted employees and some costs from other departments into this new department, so.
Were they ever replaced in the other departments?
Not that I know of, no.
Because this department is carrying on the functions for the schools and for the town.
Right, yeah, the, when we started out, we had three transfers from the DPW yard. One was, you know, the superintendent of building the grounds and then we had two, a W3 and a W4. That was, that money was transferred into the department. So really it cost, it was already budgeted. And then just recently, we, you know, in the 16 budget, we're moving over the heating ventilation technician and the maintenance man. So five positions came from, that were already funded. That's a big chunk of money. So if you take off that five, it's, you know, about $400,000.
Okay, well that makes, that does make a difference.
Well, and Bill himself was with the school department for a number of years before.
36, yeah.
Coming into this and heading up this department, so.
Bill, in FY16, what is the one-time $60,000?
Yeah, it's, yeah, and I had listed in the, at the end of my report all the projects I'd like to do, but it's just, it's just small little projects that are not funded in the general budget.
Okay. Yeah, I have a question I have. The HVAC tech and the maintenance mechanic, those were transfers from the school in last fiscal year?
No, they're not, they're still working, you know.
Is that the one we've got the problem with?
That is the one that was, those two positions were negotiated to come over to the town side, but they cannot come over till fiscal year 16 because they were appropriated and town meeting voted on them.
Okay, all right.
In the school department budget in fiscal 15. So they'll be coming over to the.
In 16.
Town side in 16.
Okay.
Everyone in the school department, the custodians and the maintenance technicians, they still report to us, but a lot of that, all that funding is still handled by the school department. In the 16 budget, the heating ventilation technician and the maintenance person, and the overtime and uniforms allowance will be transferred into the department.
Any other discussions or a motion?
I think a motion to approve and forward to the Warren Committee, the FY16 consolidated facilities budget in the amount of $951,254 level service, $859,262 level dollar.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Well, thank you, yeah.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Good job.
Keep on trucking, right?
That's right. Have a good night, Bill.
Thank you, yep.
Okay, we, the police chief is here, so let's move on to the police budget.
I expected to be last. Good evening.
Good evening, chief.
Hope everyone had a nice Thanksgiving.
Good, how about yourself?
Not eventful. We had a couple of things this weekend here, but no big problems.
All right, so we have your budget. Are you here to speak to the MEMA budget as well?
Yes.
I will, yeah, I'll do both.
Okay, we'll start with the police budget, bigger one and we'll go to the smaller one. MEMA.
Should have brought it in.
Okay, so chief, the department heads who have been in have been giving a little bit of an introduction to their budget and the level service versus the level dollar request. So if you want to start us off with any comments, request. So if you wanna start us off with any comments, you might wanna bring out.
So, this is my seventh year as chief. Um, when I began in nine, in two thousand and seven, uh, we had fifty-six offices. Uh, this year, we've finally got it back up with your help and the work of this board. We've gotten it up to fifty-three. Um, we're a very busy community. In ten years, we grew from twenty-five thousand residents to twenty-seven thousand. And if you just look at the issues that this board, as well as many other boards in town, have been dealing with, we're a community that continues to grow. Currently, you have proposals just for housing. Um, Sullivan's project, which is Milton Hill House Two, has just completed with multiple units there. You have a massive, what I call a massive project before you at one-thirty-one L.A., which would bring fifty-seven units to that busy area and that, with all the issues that go on there. Um, you have the Meg Lane proposal, which has just gone from seventy-two to ninety units in their proposal. And as you know, you have other proposals that have floated around. The people have come to us about Holland Street, Hillside, other places in, in town like that. Fortunately, you had the Muse, which were, really would've changed the whole quality of character of that neighborhood up there, has been withdrawn, but that would've had a dramatic impact on the town. But all of these things do. Um, one of the things that, that I've said and I noted in a, in my narrative to you is that the things that have really changed in Milton, um, in the past few years, and society as well, and the issues that we deal with every day are reflective in much of this. We, we are a community which education is a big part of this town. Uh, we have not only our public schools, we have two private high schools, Milton Academy and Fontburne Academy. Cory College has grown into a city of its own. Um, we, we have a, an enrollment of between eleven and thousand, eleven and twelve thousand students. And the issues just associated with school security and the, and the challenges for young people today draw on an immense, a very large draw on the police department. We have a small community hospital that I'm sure that you sit on the board on, that was just a very small, little country hospital years ago, that is now a very busy metro hospital. With the closing of Quincy City, the shift of work order from there is a great deal of it. We've already been made aware, we'll come here to Milton. Um, issues of drug abuse, mental health are things that we deal with at Milton Hospital every day, working with their staff. So those types of things, and as I say, those are things above and beyond just the general population. If you take the area of Fuller Village, which when I came on this job duties, it was just a big field, it's now one of the largest senior residences in the metropolitan Boston area. And that in itself draws a lot of resources in a different type of way. So, the budget that I've given you, and as you all know better than I, I mean, two of you are both chairs of the Warren Committee, you understand this process full well. We've been through the level dollar exercise now for multiple years. It has allowed us to keep our heads afloat without having to have an override, which has really been the one thing in the history of, since passage of Proposition Two and a Half in nineteen eighty, it's been the one thing that's really kept our head above water, is the successful overrides that we've had in this community. But from a policing perspective, we're at the point now where in this budget, I've asked for two additional offices in my level service budget. Because even with that, it's just getting us back to where we were in nineteen ninety-two. And as I've said, you and I know just from the issues that we deal with every day, talking about not just the small things, but the bigger things that we're challenged with. And you saw on Saturday, we had locked down a whole neighborhood in this community because we had an Ebola scare. And it happened just like that. And fortunately, the training and preparation that had gone on amongst all of our public safety disciplines, we're able to screen this gentleman who had just returned from Africa, very quickly, get him into a major Boston hospital, but make a quick determination that he was not a candidate for Ebola. And, and bring that, bring the, the scare out of it and the fear out of it, bring that, that neighborhood back to, you know, normal operations rather quickly. So those are the challenges that we have every day. Um, we do need to address this. I, I, I've said many times, I do believe in being a team player. We try to use whatever extra money that we have to keep our head above water. This year, we used a lot of money, we, we were very tight in FY fourteen. We used a lot of the money that we had excess at the end to help fund the pay raises that were negotiated at the end of fourteen as we came into fifteen. And some of the steps and lanes and things like that. So, um, I am very cognizant, and I think you know that, with, with being very diligent with the budget, but in this budget here, in the level dollar budget this year, we've asked for an increase of two additional officers. And I say, that still only brings us back to fifty-five officers. And as you all know, and you were instrumental in the adding of the second SRO this past year at Milton High School in fourteen, is that the high school alone is a draw of two full-time police officers every single day. That's just for one school. That's not all the other things. The rest of the department takes care of most of the issues in the other schools. So, those are some of the things and some of the demands that are placed upon us every day. And, and I won't even go near traffic tonight because Mr. Hurley and I can talk for two hours just about traffic.
Yeah.
So that's, that's kinda where we are. And I, I know you'll have questions, so I'll be glad to ask any questions you have.
Okay, questions for the chief or comments?
Um, just a couple of small ones for us. Uh, and I don't think it really makes any difference, but on your general expenses, some of these were really contractual as opposed to general, like the cleaning service, um, equipment, maintenance, heat, AC, is that, are those contracts?
Yes. So what we do is we have contracts for, um, well, this is one good point, that we don't have a contract for. Mr. Ritchie and I were just talking about this. Is, one of the big things that you'll see, and I noted, I think, in one of the paragraphs, is that, um, electricity, the major utilities can kinda really hold us. Um, and so I know there's been some interest by the town. I mean, unfortunately, the windmill project did not go, and that would've been a big help to your annual municipal, for all of us. But is the ability, I know Bill has been talking about purchasing from a solar farm where we can purchase collectively at a cheaper rate than, I think the town splits now between direct energy and Enstar. But things like my HVAC, um, the boilers, the maintenance, the generator, cleaning, all of that is all by contract.
Okay.
We do all that.
Yeah, and the only reason I bring it up is because this year, they, they split out contractuals from.
Yes.
And I don't, I don't think it makes a difference in yours because you've got the same number under, you know, uh, level service, level, uh, level dollar.
Right, level service, level dollar, correct.
And, uh, the only time it's different is the, you, minus two percent always. But there's, there's, there's a bunch of things here that probably should be moved down. I mean, it's just an exercise, but.
Moving, you mean from the line two to line three?
Yeah, well, from, from, from general expense down to contractual.
I can do that. If you want, if you have certain ones that you think you want me to try and do that, I'll.
Yeah, I mean, the ones that are, yeah, are clearly contracts. I, I guess.
Yeah, the ones that are in here by, I specifically had Ian list the ones that are contractual, so you, it was very clear and you would see that.
Mm-hmm. I guess the, the other question is, technically gasoline's a contract, too.
Yes, it is. Not my contract, though. That's not, that's a town contract, not my contract.
Yeah. I guess if you wanted, you could do an addendum maybe to it, if you want. I know, when do we have to get these to the Warren Committee? I know today's the deadline, yesterday.
That was discussed at the meeting, Mr. Hurley, and, um, they didn't consider gasoline utilities contractual, because we don't have a real number of an increase. So the Warren Committee didn't feel that those should go in the contractual line, so.
Well, that, I mean, that one is, you, you have a set rate for.
You do.
For gasoline. That, that's truly a contract. I, I agree that the other utilities are not.
But you don't know how many times you're gonna fill up in the year, so it's, it's an estimate, so.
So are you looking for that to be?
Unless you wanna park a car, you, you know how many times you're gonna fill up.
So you suggest you'd like to have gasoline in like a, in a contractual, like an exact... I could probably do that. I might be able to do that. The, the only reason I didn't is because that's not my, you know, as you know, that's a DPW town contract, and we all.
Right, right.
And it's almost like, the way we run it, it's exactly, the DPW's like mobile or shell. We're just buying from them. They tell you what the rate is. The difficulty is, um, there's no fluctuation in the rate. That's, that's the tough.
Right, it's the locked-in rate.
Yeah, that's the locked-in rate. That's the, like, right now, I, I don't, I'm not sure, but the consumer is, I think, maybe doing better than, than we are, right? Because it's just dropped so, it's just dropped so drastically, you know?
But you're right, Tom. It is the same. It's one-thirty-five, right, for level dollar, level service.
Yeah, so, so it really doesn't make any difference, I don't think.
No. And I don't think the chief was here earlier. I think the reason for that is that the Warren Committee has said that level dollar, they'll still, they'll allow us to, they'll allow a department head to state what's contractual, so that might bump the level dollar up over where the current year's appropriation is.
Correct.
But you have at the exact same number, so it's probably not an issue here.
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah.
You had a couple of other questions, Tom?
Um, just, um, overtime was the other question.
Prepared for that one. That one I would, that's, I mean, that's the one big, it, it's, you know, we never budget what we actually spend if, if you, and I just did a breakdown. If you look at just the overtime actuals going back to ten, the actuals were four-twenty-nine, five-eighty, five-ninety-seven, four-seventy-two, and four-seventy-five. And the difficulty, especially when you're running with fewer police officers, then the only other way to adequately protect your community is through overtime. The second, and just as important, is that even though we run short, we're constantly faced with challenges. Like now we're in the holiday season, we're gonna want extra patrols, and it, and I know members that, yourself included, extra patrols in the business districts.
Yep.
You know, we, we put extra things on special events in town, special times of year. The warmer weather, clearly, um, I know all of you, like myself, hear from parents, you know, alcohol is still the drug of choice in this community, and, and we constantly have to pay attention to alcohol in young people. And unfortunately, we also have to pay attention today to narcotics in young people. Maybe not as bad as some other communities, but we do. So that places the pressure on overtime. The one thing we do is, we watch it very closely. Every Friday, I get a breakdown of every dime that we're gonna spend. And it's from there that, and I, I think we've gone through this in the past, that we've been able to plan out how to hold back real tight and go ahead. Because if, if you look historically, I don't think I've ever come for a reserve transfer for overtime in seven years of a chief. So one way, the other, pull back, whether you pull it back from training, whether you pull it back from other special, if you see the actual numbers of overtime, just take a five-year pick, they're all way above what's budgeted in, in both the level dollar and the level service budget. And I don't believe in the level service. I upped it any more than it was in, in the level dollar.
Uh, no, it's the same in level service, level dollar, yeah. It's just, it's, it's up from.
Yeah, because we had, because the Warren Committee, that was what, so when the give-backs, as you know, when, it's just that critical to our operation. The two things we've fought for in the last three years in give-backs have only been two things, overtime and gasoline. Fortunately, this year, in year three, and I think the Warren Committee, to their credit, recognized it, they upped that line item by thirty-five thousand, so we didn't have to fight for it this year. Shouldn't happen again. Um, overtime, I'm, I'm not gonna say I'm comfortable, but I, I'm fully prepared to have to fight for that every year. I'm, I'm, I'm prepared to have to do that. Then try to, I'm not gonna come and say to give me two-hundred thousand more, or I'm just, I just don't think that's fair to the other departments as well.
Chief, on Schedule B, this is, I think this must be one-time, it's other available funds, but the deer, it looks like the deer money fluctuates year to year. And there's one called SETB. It looks like it was available last year, but is that just a one-time?
So SETB is, is our nine-one-one money? That's our nine-one-one money that we get to run nine-one-one. You pay, we don't, we use all of our nine-one-one money to run our nine-one-one system, our upgrades. Every single thing in that room comes out of that. That's a statewide, state of telecommunications board. The only sec, is we break down training and just nine-one-one operations. So SETB is, is nine-one-one money, just to run the nine-one-one operation for the community. The training aspect, it is to train our people, which we're required to do every single year. You know, for our cadets and our dispatchers who, as short as seven, eight years ago, came to work, we got them certified and they just, you know, went to work, they receive, and are mandated to have in-service training every single year, just like our police officers. So we use, we use those monies for both of that, to run the nine-one-one operation and to run, and to train all the personnel that work in there.
So are those funds that come in every year?
Every year, yeah. Those are attached to the twenty-five, I, I think it's, I think it's twenty-five cents per, every time you dial four-one-one, there's a twenty-five cent assessment, and that funds statewide nine-one-one in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little confused. Same question. I mean, that just shows forty-seven thousand have expended, but no revenue and a deficit at the end?
Because our money hadn't come in yet.
Okay.
I don't think I'm, it's a revolving fund. I don't believe the money had come in by the thirty-first. They're, they're not the best in.
Okay.
In reimbursements.
And I guess this isn't really a straight budget question, but a question that we like, Tom in particular likes to talk about, but I, I think there is a growing need for it. But in, in the summer, the bicycle patrols, especially in the square, but foot patrols in the business districts, not just the square, but, you know, the central half-business district is a growing business district.
Absolutely.
And a lot more development down that area, too. So with the two new patrol positions, we don't, we'll see what the Warren Committee says in terms of funding, but would they allow you to do some more of these foot patrols?
So you, you're seeing a lot of it. You don't, I don't think you'd even realize, if you notice a lot at night, um, well, it was a lot until Conley's fenced off there. There, if you notice most nights, we had a cruiser there and an officer at that location, particularly in the rush hour. On the, on the Milton Village side, the car and the officer are in the parking lot of Citizen Bank. They're in that area there. Um, I do concur with that. And as I've said, when we hired these last two, you'll see more of that. You'll see offices during the holiday period. We had offices in the square yesterday during the tree lighting, you know. We knew, we had officers assigned to the square during the, um, merchants had quite a big event, which was actually bigger than we even expected. I think it was bigger than they expected. So those things you'll see. You, you are correct, and, and I think that when we were at both the meeting, when we were at the Milton Arts Center on the proposal for East Milton Square, and, um, a recent Traffic Commission meeting that we were present, and also the ZBA meeting where the Conleys made their request, where all the departments, Chief Grant and I spoke, you definitely see that Central Ave is definitely a growing, it's a busy area now. It's just, it's, it's definitely... East Milton, I think, I really do think that once you complete this deck project and get these additional spaces and get the lighting, the new traffic signals, I really think you're gonna see a pretty big improvement there. Uh, people, one of the truest things that was in the heart, that's Howard, is it Howard Steinhardtson Report, was people wanna see where they're, where they park. They wanna be able to see where they're going to. You know, they don't wanna pocket, you know, Jack Rabbit to go to Stella's. Now they wanna get, that's, we always get a lot of pushback on the Bryant Ave service zone parking, because most of the people we make use it, work, can't stay with it. And I think that when you put these new spaces in the heart of the square, you're gonna see a big change. It's just, it's just gonna be a totally different positive that doesn't exist in that square right now. And maybe fifteen years from now, it won't be as effective as it's gonna be in twenty fifteen, but I really think that, um, it just, those things show how much the square and the village and, and Central Ave, how vibrant they have become, and, and we're very much aware of that. We have cameras in all of them now. We have, you know, we pay a lot of attention and resource to them.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I guess that, that aside, I mean, you know, you know, granted that specific times there is, but I, I think there's just something, um, there's something to having either bicycle or foot patrol on a regular.
I agree.
Basis, as opposed to in a cruiser, uh, it, it's just, it's just more impersonal in a cruiser. It's more, you know, it's, it's just that, the friendliness factor, the, just everything else that goes along with having a, a patrol officer on foot or in, you know, just, I, I think makes the business area that much better, regardless of cameras.
Ticketing cars that need to be ticketed for parking or, it, I watched the tape of the ZBA hearing on the Falconi Restaurant, and it sounded like a lot of the resident complaints were about existing conditions, about parking and trucks going down small streets and blocking traffic.
Well, clearly, parking ticket revenue is down. Um, yeah, it's been consistently down. And, and, I mean, you know, I understand it's a manpower issue.
Yeah.
But, but clearly it is. It's not because people all of a sudden are being really good about not illegally parking.
I think, too, is, and this may have been even as long as four years ago, you know, we were really targeting East Milton very aggressively, to the point that the chamber came before the board, and we, we kinda agreed to, um, particularly in the evenings, although this, I don't know how long this is going to be able to do this, because the evening is, you're getting a nightlife there now. We, we historically have kinda like, after four or five o'clock, relaxed things a little bit. But parking is going, you know, with the nightlife, I agree with that. And, and I wanna go back to what you said about, I agree a hundred and ten percent what you said about, you know, the officer on foot, the officer, I mean, if, if there's one thing I, I believe, two things very wholeheartedly about this police department is the partnerships we have, not just the schools, the neighbors, the business district is just important. The, you know, people having a face and a name and knowing where they are. I agree a hundred percent. Um, there was a time when we first went into this community policing philosophy, Larry Landrigan walked Central Ave Business District every night. That was his, that was his, and then unfortunately, with, it, it's like you circle the wagons because you're trying to survive. But I do promise you, I will work on that. I do. Um, it may not be seven days a week, but I think that we can do it, um, for a good part of the important part, you know. Week, weekends, weekends especially are very, you know, Thursday to Sunday in the square is different than Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. It's, it's very, um, and, and the enforcement aspect of it, I do still wanna come back to you, I wanna wait until, um, the square is closer to its fruition. But I do think that from an enforcement perspective, both, not just the revenue, but for parking turnover, that we begin with the pay stations and those two new lots in the square, and any parking that may go into, if, if should any parking ever go into either Milton Village or Central Ave Business District that is the property of this, of, you know, the town, that we should, everyone's done, I mean, the town of Brooklyn just did their whole town. We, Dedham's done their whole town. We should, we should definitely start to work at making that investment and doing that. And, and that's just a small baby step to start. And I think if we started at its inception, it'd be embraced a lot better.
The parking meters, you said?
The non-meters, the pay stations.
Pay stations.
Pay stations.
Yeah. So you have a number on the, on the, um...
You can all, you can do it by your cell phone. It's, it's just.
I think it's a good system.
It's a good system. It's very good. And I think that that can help with that. And going back to what you said, having an officer who's there that they know that name or face is all the time, who, you know, can go in and say, hey, look at, you know, here's what we have to do today. Here's a, being more of their partner in it than just the, the radio car showing up.
Right.
I agree with that.
You know, and you, I, I've said it before, even if we, if we took all of that increased revenue and just put it back into improvements in the, in the three commercial districts.
I agree.
It would go a long way.
Okay, any other questions or comments for the chief on the budget? Anything else you wanna add, chief?
No, I thank you. And, and, and I just wanna say, you know, I, I, I thank you, all of you on the boards that have been here before for their support. But I, I do wanna say this, and this has been a very tumultuous week for law enforcement in this country. And, um, I went to a mass at St. Pius the Tenth at four o'clock on Sunday, a church I've never been inside my entire life. It was just a folk, I'm sorry. Your neighborhood's not in the high float. I just, I just went there. And as I was sitting in the church, a priest who I did not know, and I know him only by name, as he went into his homily, he said, the first word out of his mouth was Ferguson, Missouri. And for a second, And for a second, just as a policeman, following this and listening to it and understanding just how difficult things can be, and I thought to myself, wow, where's he going? You could hear like a hush, like right through the church. And he talked a great deal about his own upbringing, growing up during busing, like, you know, I went to school here, but I had many friends from South Boston and Manapana Duchess who were bused, and I understood what it was like, and Aunt Marie knows what it was like growing up in Duxford. Those were different times, we were a different city back then. And he talked about how being part of the solution, not being part of the problem. And he talked a great deal more about it than that, but then this afternoon I received a phone call from an attorney, a female attorney in town, who's known by everyone in this room, very politically involved, and she wanted to talk to me about it, and she asked me a little bit about some of the training and some of the things that we do here, and I said, don't think as police chief that, especially, because we have a very diverse community. We live in a very diverse community, and for all the good things, we're not immune to violent crime. It could happen, just as it could happen anywhere else. But I've always said since the first day that I came in here to be interviewed to be chief, to the night that I was appointed chief, from a philosophical approach, I believe very strongly that we should communicate our issues versus litigate them. And we would be much better as a police department, being a part of this community versus apart from this community. And I think that for all the things that have happened here, all the things that the boards and the committees have, and the warrant committees, and each member of the board, as I said on this room, have supported, not just for me as chief, for the chiefs before me, the citizens of this town received the benefit of that, because we truly have a police department that is truly engaged with the community. And it's not to say that something bad might not happen tomorrow, but I'd leave you with this closing analogy that I took from the pilot Sully, who flew the plane into the Hudson. And when he talked about it, he talked about his whole piloting career. And he said that every day he went to training, every day he went to work, every time he embraced being a commercial airline pilot in the United States, he viewed everything that improved his ability as a savings account, and that he'd make a deposit every single time into that savings account. And one day, something might, bad might really happen, and he would make that one massive withdrawal to hopefully preserve his life, which is what he did the day the engines failed on that plane, and he landed at the Hudson without a single loss of life. So I can't guarantee you that, but I can guarantee you this, that even today, officers have been out the range, going through all types of drills and exercises, it's a biannual thing, it's not a, it was very cold last week when they were out there. And you can tell how the instructors, how much emphasis they place on the use of force in an American society, the equipment and the weapons that we use, but as important as escalation and de-escalation, things of that nature, but we are very fortunate in that we have men and women who, every day, make huge decisions in this community, probably bigger decisions than anybody else, because they affect human life, and I think all of us are the benefit. And you, as the appointing authority for the police department, are the ones who start that ball on. You know, the ball ends and stops with you, so I thank all of you for that, and have a good holiday season. Thank you.
Are you going to stay around for one?
Oh, I understand from Mima. I don't know anything about that budget.
But let's at least get a motion on the police budget. I don't think we've made that yet.
Move to approve and forward to the Warren Committee the FY16 Police Department Budget, in the amount of $6,957,511, Level Service, $6,828,165, which is Level Dollar.
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Aye. Unanimous. Mima's a pretty small budget, I don't know if we really need you to stay here for that, but I heard that you might be here to answer any questions, so, does anyone have any comments or questions on the, for the benefit of the people watching, Mima is the Milton Emergency Management Association. It's the Auxiliary Fire and the Auxiliary Police.
Who do, you know, a credible job, you know, you have to give credit to anyone who go out and volunteer their time, and even though I, the Auxiliary Police comes under me, I always, I can't go without singling out the members of the Auxiliary Fire as well, because they support us in so many, not just civic events, but major crime scenes, things, fatal accidents, they come out on the worst of the worst for us, and we're very grateful to all that they do for us each year.
If you look at the budget, Mark Williams is listed as having, he's the Mima director, but he's been a volunteer since 1974.
That's true.
So that's, a lot he has of volunteer service for the town.
To be honest with, between the two of them, both John Farming and Mark Williams, you'll be hard pressed to find, you know, community act with that type of, I mean, they're, John Farming, he's in his 70s, I didn't even realize he was that old, I mean, he's, he's been doing this for his whole, two of them, Mark Williams was doing it when I was in high school, so it's.
Yeah, Mark and John are dedicated community volunteers, that's for sure. So we have a request for a Level Dollar and Level Service for them, which is the same amount of each, because this is, it's $10,615. This is a very small budget that pays for some expenses for the volunteer firefighters and volunteer police.
Yeah, move to approve and forward to the Warren Committee the FY16 Mima Budget in the amount of $10,615. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Take care.
Okay, I think we skipped over a couple of budgets, let's just.
Conservation.
Conservation Commission, 20.
I'll move to approve and forward to the Warren Committee the FY16 Conservation Commission Budget, in the amount of $3,000. Level Service, 2,500 Level Dollar.
Second.
Discussion?
I have a little question, just hang on one second. Yeah, that's really matters. That's fine, I get no questions.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Okay, we have the law budget.
Move to approve and forward to the Warren Committee the FY16 Law Budget, in the amount of $289,000, which is Level Service, $261,000, which is Level Dollar.
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I just need an explanation on the difference between Level Dollar and Level Service in a law budget.
The increase in the Level Services for the Professional and Special Services, what I did was I took a five-year average of what we've spent, and that's the $225,000 that I put in the Level Service Budget. And then the Level Dollar Budget, I just carried what we got the year before, which is $197,000.
So I can get a word of that? Say that again.
It's, it's an anomaly, because really, there is no such thing as Level Service and Level Dollar in a contractual budget.
It's a contractual budget, so what I did.
You pay the bill when it comes in.
Yeah, so what, and usually if we're underfunded, we go to the reserve fund at the end of the fiscal year, because it's a, it's a budget that, that's fluid, you don't know what you're going to spend each year. So what I did for the Level Service Budget is I took the last five years appropriations, and I averaged it out, and it was $225,000. So that's what I put in for the Level Service number. And the Level Dollar number, I just put in what was appropriated for fiscal '15. But Tom's absolutely correct, it's, it's a contractual obligation budget, but historically.
Historically, the Warren Committee has, historically, the Warren Committee, and we came to an agreement a number of years ago, to use a rolling average, and, and then somehow with the Level Dollar budget, it's gotten forgotten about, but it's, it's going to come out one place or another, you know, it's.
I understand, but has there been transfers over the last number of years?
Yes.
Yes.
For the law budget?
Mm-hmm, in June, you always do transfers.
Do they ever come in under what's appropriated?
No. No. No, in fiscal year 14, we did a $22,000 reserve fund transfer.
So they put this budget together, right?
Aunt Marie's.
No, I put this budget.
You put the budget together.
I put this budget together.
Are they aware of what this budget is? The company that represents the town?
Yes.
The retainer.
They get a copy of this budget, once you approve and sign it this evening, a copy of this budget goes to Murphy, has to to me.
But you've got little control over lawsuits and?
You just don't.
No, understood, yeah, yeah. There's a lot of lawsuits going on at the moment.
I mean, there's.
But they did hold for fiscal year 16, they did hold their pricing, they didn't increase anything.
Yeah, they're not seeking an increase in the hourly rates, but the retainer has also stayed the same.
Stayed the same.
I think it's important for the public to know, though, that it does cost a lot of money legally to represent this town.
Absolutely.
You know, between lawsuits that people don't even know about, and one lawsuit can cost you a couple hundred grand.
In legal fees, sure, yeah.
Well, on the back couple pages, actually have the budget history going back to 1997, so it's, it's varied quite a bit, obviously, it just depends on what's going on in a given year.
And you get a breakdown every time an invoice is sent in?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to, do we already do it?
You do.
We did, yeah.
Was it seconded?
Yep.
Okay, any discussion on the move? And if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay, we have general insurance.
General Insurance is another contractual obligation budget, and this is for your workers' comp, your multi-peril, your liability insurances for your elected officials, your law enforcement, your school board, and for the fire and police injured on duty.
Question, on the multi-peril policy, the actual came in at $273,000 in FY14. Do we, do we know where it's going to come in, or do we have a feeling where it's going to come in in '15, and why are we budgeting through '40? So we're significantly up from the actual of FY14. What's changed?
Because we, we have to budget for what is anticipated to be the cost, however, we.
Those are the credits?
The credits that I do for the loss control credit program, that doesn't come in till the next fiscal year for the previous year's program.
Okay.
So I have to budget that way.
Okay, but we honestly think there's going to be a $40,000 increase in the multi-peril? And we haven't added any new buildings.
But that's also accidents?
Sure, it's liability, yes.
And it goes on your prior three-year history? And we had one good year that dropped off, and we picked up a year that we had some, some increases.
All right, and, and that's, that's a number that comes from cooking company in terms of the estimate?
The, the police and fire?
No, no, I'm talking about the multi-peril.
No, that's MIA, Massachusetts Intellocal Insurance Association.
Okay, but how do we get, how do we get the $340,000?
Massachusetts Intellocal Insurance.
So MIA is actually saying, you should budget this?
That's right.
Okay.
Any other discussion, or would someone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve and forward to the Warren Committee the FY16 General Insurance Budget in the amount of $1,9,932.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I did have one other question, I just noticed it. The all other line, what happened in FY14?
We had some heavy deductibles for some police matters, we had some SOAR backups that we have to pay $2,500.
No, it's, I mean, $250,000 compared to $60,000. I mean, what? Something spiked it, I mean hugely spiked it in FY14.
Oh, no, that $250 is, is an encumbered amount. We encumber that each year, in case any of the lawsuits that are filed are not covered by MIA.
Okay.
And we have one outstanding now that's not covered by MIA, so we always, historically, have carried over $250 each year in order to pay those.
Okay. So, so the $250 was encumbered in '14, just hasn't been used, so it just keeps getting carried forward?
It just keeps getting carried forward.
Okay.
Again, in case we have any lawsuits.
So presumably that $250 was used prior to '14 to have it built back up, or?
No, it's always been there each year, and it, it sometimes will go way up and way down.
It was added in '14, it had to have been, because its budget, it's appropriated in '14.
It was encumbered from '13 into '14, and then it was encumbered from '14 into '15. It's an encumbered amount.
Right, but why am I seeing a spike in '14? It goes from, the original budget was 60, budget adjustment was 250 to make it 310.
Are you looking at Schedule E, because that's all blacked out on it?
Yeah, Schedule E.
You have it in Excel, I have the PDF, so I, can you tell us what the numbers are? I think Dennis and I just have the PDFs, what were the numbers?
Right there. So, and, it was originally budgeted in FY14 at 60. There was a budget adjustment of $250,000.
Was the encumbered, from fiscal year 13.
Right, to get to 310.
And expended was 74. So three, 235. Was the balance left?
Yeah.
That with some other money was, that brought up to 250 again, and it was encumbered into '15.
Okay. But I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, in order to get this $250 encumbered amount, if it's something we've always been doing, and hadn't ever used, then why did we need to encumber it in '14?
Well, we do use it periodically, but I always keep it, have always kept it at the 250. That's been historic, and it's been because of the savings in MIA participation credits, dividend credits, the loss control credit program. It always keeps it at the 250, that continues to revolve forward each year.
Right, but we actually appropriated 250 in '14, which.
So you're asking why is that number 60 rather than 60 plus 250?
Well, I'm asking, if, if the 250's always been there and just keeps getting rolled, then why did, why did 250 come in in '14, if it was already there?
It's encumbered, it didn't come in in, what you appropriated in '14 was $950,647 in the budget. The 250 is just encumbered from the prior year.
Okay, and that's just because it's showing up as a budget, so.
It just shows as a budget adjustment, because of the way we did the budgets this year. Historically, you've never seen that 250 carried forward unless you went to page two, where it says encumbered 250, that's where you would see it each year.
So is this just a new column that the Warren Committee added?
Yes, it's the new way we set up the budgets. You would have never, you have never seen that, Tom, on the front page. But you didn't appropriate an additional 250, it's just an encumbered amount that's carried forward each year, in the event of lawsuits that are uncovered by.
I understand what the encumbered is, yes. Okay, all right.
Okay.
Okay, so we've already voted that, so we're on to Selectmen's E and R. The amount of $55,100.
And it's less than, and again, this is another contractual budget, and it's less than fiscal '15, because we don't have a fall election. We had a state primary, September state primary, in this fiscal year, we don't have that in '16. We just have the October fall town meeting, the March presidential primary, and the annual town meeting.
Right.
Now, I remember we talked, was it about a year ago, about possibly rolling this into the town clerk's budget? Is this the line item?
Mm-hmm, we did. And then it was decided that she broke out her budget to show what was truly election and registration costs in town, and that separate was town clerk to run her town clerk department. And that's how we ended up doing it last year.
So in the future, is this something we would want to move into the town clerk's budget rather than the Selectmen's budget?
It makes more sense to be there, but.
I couldn't remember where we left it, I think there was a discussion with the Warren Committee, wasn't there? Did they have a preference? I don't recall what it was, but I thought there was some discussion about this last year. Well, in any event, regardless of where it is, the number is based on the elections.
Right.
Move to approve and forward to the Warren Committee the FY Selectmen's E and R Budget in the amount of $55,100.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we also have veteran services, that's our last budget for tonight.
There was that one request of the cemetery to move the flags into their budget from this budget, has that been done?
Not that I know of, no.
You're talking about what Bob Mason referenced at the Veterans Day Parade.
Oh, I didn't know.
I don't know if anyone mentioned that too, I know I didn't.
I did.
Forgot about it.
You didn't mention it.
I mentioned it to somebody.
I remember, are the flags in this budget? Bob Mason is a cemetery trustee, and he did ask at the Veterans Day Parade that possibly the flags could be moved into the cemetery budget. So it.
They're always late, and they're always.
So can I understand it correctly, that they have an appropriation in the cemetery budget for flags, and you want me to take that amount and put it in?
No, they do not right now, but they would rather have it in their budget so that they can.
Yeah, I don't see it in this veterans' budget. Is this where it was? General expenses? Let's check general expenses. I don't know if the cemetery submitted an official request, they probably didn't, but it was, I mean, not to.
Unless it's in that miscellaneous amount.
It's probably in the miscellaneous line. I'll follow up with the cemetery, something turned in tomorrow.
I forgot about that until you just mentioned it, Tom. So we have a request for the same amount, Level Service, Level Dollar, $182,158. So we have a request for the same amount, Level Service, Level Dollar, $182,158.
And again, as you know, we get 75% reimbursement for the Veterans' benefits.
Okay, I'll move to approve and forward to the Warren Committee. The Warren Committee can always make the change, I suppose. I don't think we've made a motion yet, but to approve and forward to the Warren Committee, the FY16 Veteran Service Budget, in the amount of $182,158 Level Service, $182,158 Level Dollar.
Second motion.
Any discussion?
Other than just, I guess, informing the Warren Committee that, you know, it may be changing slightly.
I follow up with the superintendent.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous. So we still have the Selectmen's Budget to submit at our, that'll be at our next meeting?
That's correct.
Are there any others that are outstanding, or we know, covered all of the ones that are under our jurisdiction?
You have the DPW.
DPW, right.
You have the Central Business Office, you have Selectmen, and I...
Those three. Will all of them be...
And group insurance.
Okay, will all of them be on for the next meeting?
We didn't see CBO when Amy was...
We did, but it had to be deferred for some, at the prior meeting, for some follow-up.
Okay.
Okay, so CBO, DPW, and our budget.
And group insurance.
And group insurance. So will we have all of them on?
On your December 8th?
On the 11th?
Yes.
Yeah, which we've now moved to December 11th.
Which we've now moved to December 11th.
Okay. All right, then we are on now to the bid acceptance for the annual town reports and warrants. We had a, we have a motion to approve a bid.
Motion to accept a three-year bid from J and R Graphics, the printing and binding of the annual town reports and town warrants.
I will second.
And according to the information we have from Mrs. Rizzi, but that was our only bidder.
Yes.
And we worked with them for a lot of years, so, they do a good job. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, on to number nine, which is the 2015 Common Vittler's License Renewals.
Make a motion to approve the following 2014 Common Victular License Renewals.
And I guess that should say 2015.
Radio Coffee House, 24 Central Ave. Milton Youth Hockey, Yulinrink. Newcombe Farms, 1130 Randolph Ave. Lethy LLC, New England, doing business as Bruegger's Bagel Bakery, 360 Granite Ave. Abdalgani Sanusi, doing business as Zack's Pizza and Wings, 538 B Adams Street. Hojarn Inc., doing business as Mr. Chan's, 534 Adams Street. Janus Place Two, doing business as JCI, Houghton's Pond Concession. Tino's Pizza, 2 Central Avenue. Stella's Luncheonette, 558 Adams Street. Starbucks Coffee, 552 Adams Street. Milt Dunn LLC, doing business as Dunkin' Donuts, 545 Adams Street. BND Ichiro Inc., doing business as Ichiro Sushi, 538 A Adams Street. Spellbound Inc., doing business as Milton House of Pizza, 537... How do you pronounce that?
Twigo.
Twigo Management LLC, doing business as GH Vent and Company, 7 Pleasant Street. Welch Restaurant Management LLC, DBA Abbey Park, 550 Adams Street. Milton Fuller Housing Corp., doing business as Fuller Village, 1372 Brush Hill Road. Milton Fuller Housing Corp., DBA Fuller Village, 1399 Blue Hill Avenue. The Plate, 27 Central Avenue. Milton's Opus LLC, DBA Steel and Rye Restaurant, 95 Elliott Street.
Second, but I do have a couple of questions. Why, Milton Youth Hockey is not running the concession stand any longer, so why are we issuing them a Common Victular's license?
That should not be there. It's an error.
And the second one is, in terms of the plate, are those licenses issued by address because they have a new location in...
They won't have.
Won't be open until next year.
They will. They might have to apply for the new location.
Okay. They're not open yet?
Nope.
Okay.
So should we offer a friendly amendment to delete Milton Youth Hockey at Yulinrink? You'll accept the friendly amendment?
I'll accept that.
Okay. And just for the benefit of the people who are, might be watching, what is the fee on these licenses, and what are the requirements to get the license renewed every year?
The fee is $75. It was increased in around 2005. It used to be $25. And the, we have an application that the business owner will come in and fill out, and then we work with the town treasurer and the Board of Health to make sure that their taxes are paid and their food licenses are all up to date.
Okay. And if no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And I'm assuming the liquor licenses are coming up soon?
On the 8th.
On the 11th.
On the 11th. So I have the 8th in my head.
Okay, we have some executive session meeting minutes to release. Is this the correct motion?
Yes.
Okay. Where's that?
Number 10.
I'll move to release to the public the following executive session meeting minutes, 2012, August 23rd, 2012, Items 1 and 2 withheld, 2013, January 10th, 24th, Item 2 withheld, February 7th, Item 2 and 3 withheld, February 28th, Item 1 withheld, March 1st, Item 1 and 2 withheld, March 7th, Item 1 withheld, March 21st, Item 2 and 3 withheld, 2013.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We're slowly making our way through those. We'll have more in the next couple of meetings to go through and release. Okay, Boards and Committee Appointments.
I'll move to approve the reappointments of the following members of the Conservation Commission, Judith Darrell Kemp and Michael Blute, to serve through May 2017.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank them for their service.
They do a good job.
Okay, we have a motion to approve income from the Mary L. Peabody Fund for Christmas Gifts.
Okay, I'll move to approve a grant in the amount of $200 from the Mary L. Peabody Fund for the purchase of Christmas gifts for needy Milton residents.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Next item is the Quincy Home Consortium Mutual Cooperation Agreement, and we have a recommendation from the planning director that we extend this agreement.
I'll move to approve participation in the Quincy Home Consortium Mutual Cooperation Agreement with Quincy, Holbrook, Braintree, and Weymouth through June 30th, 2018.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Town Administrators Report.
The only thing I want to report, Madam Chair, is the tree lighting ceremony last evening, which we all attended at 4:30 in East Milton, which was very nice. It was...
Very nice.
It was a beautiful evening. It was warm.
For change.
There were a lot of little children, and they were so happy to see Santa Claus come across the street ringing his bell. So it was, it was very nice.
It was a good effort by the merchants in the business district.
Absolutely.
I have nothing to report under the chair's report.